All right, well, thank you. Again, my name is Bill Pettit. I'm with Urban Engineers right down the street here from you. On behalf of PennDOT's Bureau of Public Transportation, we wanted to share a little bit with you related to a feasibility study for a trail.
Okay.
That really, even though the name of it is the Erie Zoo Trail, the genesis was they put together a study, they were pushing to get some funding. Along comes PennDOT, the good partners that you all know they are, and they did fund this project. And so, there's no significant engineering detail just yet. We're looking at alternatives, we're looking at impacts related to environmental features, and we're also trying to get a handle on a dialogue with key stakeholders. So that's where we're at right now. So we wanted to give you a little bit of an update for you and the administration. So we'll get going here. Yeah, and there's our partners, of course, the Erie Zoo. McCormick-Taylor is the prime consultant. Urban Engineers is under a contract with McCormick-Taylor, who's under contract with PennDOT. Thanks. So, again, introduce the project. There is some design criterion that we wanted to talk to you about because it materially changes the project, not only cost-wise but impact-wise. And what all of you want for your community is the goal of this feasibility study. Not something we want, it's something that the community wants. So we want to talk to you about that and talk about key features within the alternatives, which I think, you know, there were a few surprises for us, and I live in Erie, Andy lives, we both live in Fairview, but I mean, we work here, so we know the area well, very well. So, but maybe you'll be surprised by a few pieces of information as well. So, what we wanted to do is be compatible with, and I apologize if my back is to you folks, I don't mean that. I suppose I'll be, over here is okay, or a little better. Erie, NPO's Long Range Transportation Plan for 2050 talks about active transportation projects, meaning accommodation of bicycles, accommodation of the pedestrian, et cetera. So, this is completely compatible with the plan that all of you put forward for transportation decision-makers to think about and hopefully support through funding. So, again, and there were a couple of references within the long-range transportation study itself that came really close to what we're going to share with you tonight, including a very dangerous situation on 505. If you're a pedestrian and you're coming down from Glen Drive and you're walking along 505, the horizontal curves, there's a super elevated roadway there and a bridge, so not conducive to great safety. So we've got a couple of thoughts about how we can cure that. So we'll talk about that a little bit. Andy, I'm blocking you out here. So, active Erie transportation plan, City of Erie and the NPO also have a plan that sets the stage for this kind of a conversation related to the feasibility study. And again, a plan that was developed for the Erie Loop Bike Way indicates that a key component of that bike way is 30A Street, about a five-mile stretch at close to your southern border of the city proper, so it's right within the area that we're examining here with all of you.
We have nothing on 30A Street yet, right?
Right. So you've got sidewalk.
We're going up to Green Garden to no place.
To no place. So there's pieces, of course, that could be had, like a lot of transportation projects, having worked in transportation for a number of years myself, doing them in pieces is better than not doing them at all, most of the time, if you can do it, if you can get funding. And thanks, Andy walked it back a little bit, and you can see that the red or fuchsia-colored line on the very bottom of the map of Erie is 30A Street, and that is part of the Erie Loop project. Thanks, I needed somebody more skilled than my finger apparently, so thanks, Andy. As I shared in my opening comment, the Erie Zoo put together a document for a potential walking and bike trail, and that was, again, the genesis of our discussion here tonight. So, when you think about intermodal connections or multimodal connections, you think about the biking, the walking, but you also have to think about those that use transit. And there's a number of routes within our study area that pass by here. So we had a conversation with EMTA about, you know, how do we enhance what you're doing, the service you're delivering to the constituency within this project area? Is there something we need to be thinking about to help support that transit provision for anyone within this area? And there's four different routes, like I said, two on Cherry and two on 30A Street. So, Leanne would love this piece of data, because these are not lightly-traveled roads. There's 16,000 daily trips along 30A Street in this project area. That's a lot of vehicles going through this particular corridor, and we're going to define the study area for you in a moment. In Glenwood Park Avenue, about 9,100, every day, that are used in that corridor. And we did have, it was like a PennDOT eyes-only, because they don't like to share a lot of traffic accident data, but there are a couple of hotspots within this study area, most especially at Cherry and 30A Street. So, and that's something that could be weaved into a solution package for all of you to consider as well. So what we're going to do, Andy's going to walk you through the study area, and you'll see the boundaries, and then we're going to talk about pieces of the alternatives. And like I said, we'd really like to get your input on some next steps, what works for you, what doesn't work for you, concerns. I will tell you, PennDOT's funding this study. I think we have a good shot at getting final design or engineering plans funded. I think what they're going to be knocking on your door for is the maintenance responsibilities of anything that we conclude is worthy to add to this community, they are going to be knocking on your door. So, for maintenance.
And security.
And security, and that's a component as well. And we did talk to the administration here about three weeks ago, and that was one of the items that was brought up as well. So we're continuing to talk to groups, and I appreciate Chuck and Leanne being here. And the mayor, thank you, mayor, if he's on.
Yeah, a couple of items specifically that we did speak about were lighting of certain portions of the trail, and then there's one area that we'll talk about that's kind of in a wooded area adjacent to Mill Creek, looking at potential alternative coming down from Glenwood neighborhood down toward Mill Creek. And it passes over, there's an existing bridge over Mill Creek that the zoo had constructed but never used for an extension of the train. It's a nice wooded, natural type of area, but it is somewhat secluded and, you know, not really close, so.
That was one of the surprises for me. I don't know if you knew that there was a bridge back there south of where the train runs now? That was a surprise. It's just sitting out there, and it was meant to accommodate an expansion of the train tracks in the Glenwood Park, but we'll show it to you momentarily.
Yeah, so, these roads listed in the bullet point, that's, you know, generally the study area. It's going to be Cherry Street on the west side of the golf course, Glenwood Boulevard or West Grandview to the south, and we'll talk about another area that we're going to be looking at shortly. Glen Drive, Glenwood Park Avenue, West 30A Street, and then there's, you know, a couple other locations in between there that could be tied into the trail. These next couple of slides are just kind of a zoom-in to show the project area again.
Keep going.
Sure. So, you can go to the next one, yeah. So as Bill mentioned, we did take a look at environmental and cultural resources. We looked at the National Wetlands Inventory mapper. There's no wetlands within the study area. Mill Creek, obviously, there's, you know, potential for flooding, and if you look at the FEMA maps, it's within Zone A, so there is potential for flooding. And there's no major concerns in terms of threatened or endangered species within the project area. In terms of cultural resources, obviously, the park setting with the zoo, with the J.C. Martin Golf Course, those all being owned by the city, and their 4F properties, by coordinating with the city, the hope is that, you know, this trail could enhance those features that already exist and are owned by the city.
And just to share an aspect on Section 4F, it's one of the highest in the hierarchy of environmental law. This is one that they rigorously protect, and it requires federal review. Doesn't matter if it's funded locally or by the state, if it's 4F or 6F, it requires federal review. So this is a big deal.
With the potential flooding that could occur, do we have plans that we think we might try to do? Because I know right now we have new infrastructure being put with runoffs, if I'm not correct, and sewage and all that. We have a whole separate fund that's taking care of the foundation underneath.
Related to your stormwater fee?
Yeah, would that tie into each other?
Yeah, I mean, this is more, you know, flooding in the stream itself, but yeah, I mean, if improvements were made, you know, as part of your stormwater fee or the MS4 program, you know, that some of those look to reduce the amount of stormwater that would be going to Mill Creek. I don't know that the volume that would be accommodated in those sorts of projects would, you know, appreciably decrease the flooding risk, but.
Yeah, I think it's a point worth noting, and it's something that when this gets in the final design, the engineers are going to have to examine.
Yeah, and if a trail or something like that was going to be a low-line area within that floodplain.
Do you have any plans to have the neighborhood people in on it?
Yeah, we've had a conversation with, we invited all the neighborhoods, but only one really came out.
Who'd you invite?
Nobody, Cherry Street neighbors.
Glenwood. Glenwood and Glenwood Hills on, to the east of Glenwood.
Guess you forgot me, because I wasn't invited.
No? I'll have to get your name.
Really?
I live on West Arlington. It's all right, but I, I'm just saying.
We had a very modest turnout.
You know, a whole terrible situation with that Green Garden thing, because none of the people were notified about the thing until it was pretty much.
Well, it's pretty bad if you lived there and you weren't notified, so.
That's why I'm here today.
But we are going to have another stakeholder meeting related to the community there, because we only had a handful of people show up. What do we have, maybe eight?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. I mean, it was very, very modest for all the people that live in and around that area. So we're going to schedule another one to get out there.
I will be here as a city councilperson, but you're going to deal with the Glenwood.
Right, okay, understood.
It's a whole new meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we had reached out to, there was an association email address or something like that, that they had tried to get ahold of someone, but yeah, no response.
Yeah, and if you have somebody that we could contact, or that we should be contacting, what's that?
Mokris. That's the name, M-O-K-R-I-S, I believe. He lives on West Arlington also. He's the HOF president.
How did the citizens that you already talked to, how did they, did they express any views about it?
Yeah, I mean, I would say they reacted very favorably to the walkability aspects that were being featured and some of the improvements that were being offered up. There is a discussion that we want to get into, the trade-offs of pedestrian-only versus pedestrian-bike mix, because there are some consequences, not just cost, but again, you might lose some trees. There's some other things that have to be considered with a wider walkway or trail.
I'd be a devil's advocate again.
Sure.
I damn near hit one of them coming down State Street today.
A tree?
Motorized bicycles.
Oh.
And they drive like, they're full-speed motorcycles. I almost cuffed him right on 12 from State.
Okay.
When you all have your additional neighborhood reach-out, can you guys give city council an invite, so that if any of us could attend, we possibly could?
We'll do.
To see what's going on?
Yeah, and I would tell you, we're going to have a large public forum too, but we're trying to get, like, we wanted to sit with each neighborhood, and because they might have some unique aspects that they want us to consider, et cetera, but again, we sort of laid an egg in terms of our ability to get people out.
Was outreach only through email, or did you, like, flyer the neighborhoods nearby, or like, have a paper invite?
Yeah, I think it was mostly through email, they tried to reach out to people that we knew of.
Yeah, it wasn't a flyer. And we could do that if you think that's an appropriate way for us to get the word out.
Like a door hanger or something?
It's not a huge area, so, yeah, we could do that.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess one of the things that we were just talking about was, you know, some of the trail considerations, you know, should this be designed and laid out for just pedestrians, walkers, runners, that sort of thing, or like Bill mentioned, a shared-use trail that would include bicycle users? When you do introduce bicycle users, obviously, the speed differential between someone having a leisurely stroll down the sidewalk or trail versus, you know, maybe it's kids on a bike swerving or something like that. So, you know, you introduce a lot of conflicts, and so then you have to look at design criteria. You know, maybe if it's just trail users and walkers, you're a six-to-eight-foot-wide sidewalk or trail would be sufficient. You introduce cyclists, you know, then you're looking at a 10-foot minimum of a recommended width based on some PennDOT criterion, other trailies' criteria.
Would you keep them off?
I'm sorry? Well, yeah, I mean, I guess that's a concern.
They get a lot of wheel things too.
Yeah, yeah. And they're all over, right?
They fly.
Yeah, I was mentioning in the mail before we started here that I was at a baseball game. I walked across the Guardian Bridge to get to Cleveland Stadium, and the scooters were all over, the motorized scooters, they were all over. Now, that's off a pretty big shoulder section there, it's probably 15 feet.
I want to price the gas, see what people are doing. It's a good way to get killed, though.
So that's a good one.
Yeah, I think even if we had the intention of this is going to be pedestrians and runners anyways, there's absolutely no way to keep cyclists off of it. And if that creates some sort of shortcut, or it's safer than being in traffic on 30A Street, or it reduces the amount of hills, or something like that, I think we have to have the idea that cyclists are going to use it, and we should plan accordingly. I say this as a cyclist myself. Like, if there is a paved trail, I'm going to want to use that.
Right, well, I guess, you know, if you look at the trail down at the peninsula, you know, I think most people that are out for a recreational ride and they're not looking to do high speed, they're going to feel okay, you know, maybe they're not going to be trying to ride 15, 20 miles an hour. And if you get to that point where you're riding at those sorts of speeds, I mean, I ride down the peninsula myself, I'll ride on the road, because I'm going to feel more comfortable, maybe unjustly so, riding with vehicles that are going at a, you know, speed more comparable to mine than riding on the trail where, you know, you might have kids or someone pulling a wagon, or you don't know what they're going to do.
Dogs.
Dogs, yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I think you're going to have to, there's going to be that balance, and it's going to be, you know, what that person that's riding the bike is comfortable, you know, are they okay riding on this trail? Or would they feel more comfortable with, you know, whatever level of skill they have on the road?
Yeah, no matter what, when you improve a riding surface, too, you're introducing to people the idea of speed.
Right.
You know, whether it's a roadway, you're repaving, and all of a sudden, people say, "Ah, I don't see any of those potholes that were slowing you down." People will accelerate. So, if we, if this trail is enhanced, and if, you're going to see, there's conditions out there that would say, you'd say, "Hey, we do need to replace some sidewalk," at a minimum, and some of the deficiencies at a minimum, and then maybe support other features, so. You good?
Yeah.
Well, accessibility, you're going to see, that's going to come into play here pretty quick with one of the alternatives, and we all fully support ADA compliance no matter what.
Yeah, just a couple other bullet points here. I mean, compatibility with other assets in the area. You know, Bill mentioned the future 30A Street tying into the bike loop, transit connections, that sort of thing. So, you know, these are all things that we're trying to take into consideration and generate some feedback and concern, so we can, you know, kind of take that back to the drawing board as we enhance our feasibility study.
I mean, it's a green study area. I mean, with the zoo there, you've got the ice arena, you've got Maggiore Park, you've got Glenwood Park. I mean, so, a lot of people are using your facilities here. We just want to connect the dots, and this trail is one way to do that, and get people to use the entire landscape out there.
So I guess on to the actual loop. When we met with the zoo initially, you know, they kind of envisioned this loop starting at, near the intersection of 30A Street and Cherry, near the entrance drive to the ice arena, and then traveling south. So we just included a couple of photos here of the existing sidewalk running along the west side of the golf course as it heads south towards Glenwood neighborhood. You can see a couple of the photos there. Some of the sidewalk's not in great shape. There's some really nice trees that are out there. That existing sidewalk is about six feet wide, so, you know, if we were to implement something where we were looking to have it a shared use with bicycles and pedestrians, you know, you're looking at 10 feet, so, you know, we would have to look at ways to meander it through there, to maybe minimize tree impacts, because, you know, those mature trees that have grown along Cherry Street, we don't want to be taking those down. And if we can do that with, you know, an eight-foot trail and still kind of allow that to incorporate bicycles and pedestrians, you know, depending on anticipated volumes, you know, that might be an acceptable width.
Yeah, I was going to say, you might imagine, quite a few people have told us, "Don't take out any of the trees," so.
I guess one other thing just to add is that, you know, there have been trails that will be off of the street and then allow, or maybe stripe up a bike lane on the adjacent roadway. You know, in Cherry Street in this area, I think that northbound lane is rather wide, and I don't know if that's for bus traffic or otherwise, but I mean, that's something that could be potentially looked at as, you know, a way to allow bicycle users to have, you know, I guess, a little bit of space striped off or otherwise from the, from road traffic, and then allow pedestrians to use the sidewalk.
When is 30A Street going to be done? Now, the result, are you going to get to 38th and Cherry if you don't have a bike path on 38?
Right, I mean, that would be, we would be looking to tie in, you know, to that connection.
That would be part of the.
If it were done, you know, in the future. I guess, you know, currently, you know, there's not always a continuation loop, so you could have that facility at that point to be tied in at a later date when those other facilities are ready for.
So you do 38th later than going up Cherry?
I would say we do. If this comes out the way we're thinking about it, no matter what, 30A Street, that area would accommodate a bicyclist. So it would be compatible with your loop that the city has in its plans and the NPO has in its plans. So we do that part at a minimum, Ed.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. So I guess for, along Cherry Street, you know, the original plan that the zoo had kind of looked at was extending it south to West Grandview and then turning to the east on West Grandview. So currently, there are sidewalks along West Grandview to a point, and then there are several gaps where, you know, in front of certain houses, there's not sidewalks. So if you were going to extend the trail, you know, you'd be looking at adding a sidewalk or something on someone's yard, which, you know, to your point.
People have taken sidewalks out.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And right here, clear evidence that if you're truly connecting, you've lost it here. So, something would have to be done. Either you share the road or you extend the sidewalk.
Right. And so, as an alternative, when we walked the site with the zoo a few months back, we looked at using Glenwood Boulevard, you know, the road immediately to the north of that, east-west. The westbound lane on Glenwood Boulevard is probably 20 to 22 feet wide. It's a single lane, so, you know, if you were to stripe that off and, you know, delineate it in some manner, you could put the trail connection along the north side of Glenwood Boulevard, stripe off, you know, 10 feet, 8 feet, and still have 12 to 14 feet left for vehicle traffic. When we met with some of the community stakeholders, they said, you know, compared to the Grandview idea, they liked that idea. You're adjacent to the golf course, it's, I mean, it's not exactly a park, but there's trees and stuff, and with the Boulevard, it's a little separated from the neighborhood, and, you know, maybe the neighbors in that area are a little more accepting of a trail option like that, that's not cutting, you know, directly through yards, to your point where sidewalks may have been removed, you're not putting something back in where people already don't want it. So, I think you can show the next slide.
Sure.
I have a few photos of that. Yeah, they're on the top, and that's just, that's that westbound lane of Glenwood Boulevard that, again, is probably 20 to 22 feet wide, that could be potentially striped off over to Highview Boulevard, or Highview, yeah, Highview Boulevard. And then heading south from Highview, there's a nice grass area that's along the east side of the road there, so we were looking at that to potentially wind a trail through, keep people, you know, again, separated from the roadway and use that green space. There's also a wooded area a little bit farther to the east that, you know, just overlooks the bluff that looks down onto Mill Creek. There's already kind of an informal path that winds through there, looks like people walk their dogs or just kind of hike through there, so, you know, we discussed that with the folks from the zoo about, you know, adding that as a potential offline alternative, you know, a little bit off the street, off the, away from traffic. A trail like that would present accessibility challenges, but, you know, we thought that if you had the alternative with a paved trail or otherwise adjacent to the road, and then you could maybe perhaps have a gravel or.
That grassy area stops real quick, and it drops off like that.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing easy in there, that's for sure.
And speaking of the drop-off, this is one of the things that, you know, we talked about. Again, and Bill kind of mentioned it earlier, there's that bridge on the right that was constructed, not sure when, but it was never used for an extension of the zoo train. But one of the alternatives that we were looking at was somehow winding a boardwalk with some switchbacks to, you know, kind of ease the slope from that steep drop-off and wind it down to that wooded area and connect it to that existing bridge. And that would, you know, allow people to, again, kind of get in a little more natural setting, cross over Mill Creek, and avoid some of the other locations, particularly Glen Drive, which offers a little bit steeper terrain, one-way traffic, and some other challenges itself.
And the worst part of 505 as well, Glenwood Park.
Yeah, I guess that's a good point, because this bridge, as it crosses over Mill Creek, ties directly into the existing asphalt trail that goes through Glenwood Park.
So really, this is an unused asset that the city owns, a bridge in the middle of Glenwood Park.
So, I guess back to Glen Drive. This would be the connection if you were to stay on Highview after you came across Glenwood Boulevard, or if you used West Grandview, Glen Drive, if you've driven it, it's one-way, you know, from west to east, downhill, it's rather steep. There's a series of concrete blocks that runs along the south side of the roadway, and it looks like there's some water that maybe seeps out of the, out of that side hill, and then there's a guide rail on the northern side of that road, and then again, a steep drop-off down to Mill Creek. So, takes you down to Glenwood Park Avenue, and again, like Bill said, you know, ideally we would, you know, avoid putting people, trail users, onto that shoulder area of 505 just because of the high speeds and the horizontal curve of the roadway at that point, especially as it travels over the bridge over Mill Creek.
Yeah, you'd probably set the stage, if you chose an alternative like this, for development of some level-landing areas, so people with difficulty, mobility difficulties might be able to rest on flat ground and then try to overcome this grade, because it is really steep.
Yeah, the only thing you can do on Glen Drive is the south side of the bridge, the cement is.
Yeah, if you could push those blocks back and widen out, yeah. So, one of the things that came up in our discussions with PennDOT, in our discussions with some of the community stakeholders, in our discussion with Public Works. with some of the community stakeholders and our discussion with public works and the mayor's office.
Representative Mersky brought this up as well.
Yeah, Representative Mersky's office brought this up to us was the old Glenwood Park Avenue, city-owned right-of-way, there's still some pavement under there, it's starting to become overgrown and stuff, but, you know, so the question was brought up, you know, could this be used as part of this trail? Could we extend south to that point and tie in with, with the old right-of-way and improve that to the point where trail users could, you know, use that? And again, that's through a wooded area. There is some existing infrastructure there that would obviously require some improvement, but.
So would, the road to nowhere, that would?
Correct, yeah, and it would then tie, tie back into Glenwood Park Avenue. One of the downsides to that is, you know, again, you're putting people on Glenwood Park Avenue with those curves.
That closed road goes this way though, doesn't go toward Glenwood Park Avenue, it goes toward Cherry.
Well, it starts, so you would, you would continue south along Cherry, yeah, I mean, you would continue south along Cherry and then go over Glen Ridge and then you could continue down to Glenwood Park Avenue. That red line there kind of indicates where a potential alternative would, would go.
And that does even say on Google Maps right now, Old Glenwood Park Avenue Trail.
Yeah.
And the city, city owns that right-of-way, yep. So yeah, the next slide just is a few pictures of, of that, the one on the left there is where the trail begins just off Glenwood, or Glen Ridge. I think there's a pump station right nearby there and, you know, that middle photo is just a few hundred feet down the trail, you can see the asphalt in the middle, starting to be a little bit overgrown a bit. And then obviously that photo on the right's a bit overgrown, there's some water seeping from the adjacent hillside, but.
I think Chuck, didn't you say that it's like twenty feet wide?
I think it's about twenty-three foot wide.
Twenty-three foot. So you got, you got a lot of base already there. So this is one that, it's new because we were following the Erie Zoo study area, this was outside that area, so, yeah, we've got some work to do to, to fully understand the impacts and what this might look like. But it is a viable alternative, for sure.
And obviously this is gonna be one of the concerns as, as that old Glenwood Park Avenue ties back into current Glenwood Park Avenue. I mean, you can see that photo on the left that's facing northbound and the southbound traffic is coming right, right at you. There is a decent shoulder width, but it's kind of a blind curve for vehicles and pedestrians alike, so that would be a challenge to overcome, you know, the shoulder could be expanded, you know, and pushed out into the hillside or something like that. And then continuing north, just a few photos in the area of Glen Drive where it ties back into five oh five, you can again see there's the, the bridge over Mill Creek. Again, the curve, this time you're on the outside of that curve and.
Where we putting the people?
Right, so there's an existing shoulder. When we had our discussions with Pendot, one of the things that they brought up was, you know, could you look at doing an offline bridge, you know? Route the trail away from the roadway and do a separate pedestrian-only or trail-only bridge structure, parallel to the roadway bridge just downstream of the current roadway.
It'd be a lot safer.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, and, and we had them check too, their inspection records and this bridge is not programmed for the foreseeable future, it's in good condition. So there wouldn't be an investment by them that we could parlay into a widened shoulder or a separated shoulder. So that's not in the offing for the next thirty, forty years, so whatever we do, probably isn't gonna include that bridge. Ready?
Yep. So it's about six or seven hundred feet from Glen Drive along five oh five to get to Glenwood Park and obviously there's, there's that existing asphalt trail that, that goes through Glenwood Park. You know, so we would look to utilize that for this trail. Some of the pavement's in pretty good shape, other pavement not so much, so, you know, some improvements to that. One of the things with that trail is, you can see that bottom right-hand photo where there's a chain rope across the, the trail, the trail goes right into the parking areas. And so one of the things that we thought would be, well, can we move that alignment, you know, away from the parking lot and maybe have one crossing at the driveway rather than having the trail go, you know, for a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet through the parking lot? So if we could shift the trail alignment, have one little crossing rather than, you know, a two hundred foot wide crossing of the trail and get people away from vehicles in the parking lot.
Yeah, people backing up, they don't know when a bicyclist might be flying by there, so. Couple of features like that could be improved.
Yeah, so at the north end of the park, it, you know, it ties back into there's existing sidewalk then again along Glenwood Park Avenue that runs just adjacent to the zoo. It's a bit tight there, the sidewalk is, you know, six feet wide, there's landscaping, there's a wall right there for the zoo. So I think we're against one more slide, Bill.
Yep.
Yeah, so there you can see in those, that top photo, you can see the, the wall and the landscaping to the left and then a little bit as you far, travel farther to the north, the concrete sidewalk stops and it's asphalt paving that's kind of broken up and, and again, there's, there's a fence there adjacent to it and kind of a drop off down to Mill Creek.
So you know, you know, going all the way to thirty eighth street, you can go over the old bridge?
That's one of the alternatives.
That's one of the alternatives, one would be to go all the way up to thirty eighth street.
You're stealing our thunder.
Yeah. Yeah, here's the old, the old bridge, which is already owned by the city, it was closed in twenty seventeen due to structural deficiencies, it was closed to vehicles, but pedestrians are still able to use it. You know, and this was one of the, I guess, selling points for the Bureau of Public Transportation, they, they liked this, potential use of this bridge as, as kind of a key feature.
Kind of a gateway into these features within the area, including the zoo. And also, a couple of years ago, well, more than a couple of years ago, I don't know if everybody knows, but Mel knows, because Bonnie Dobinspek was a state transportation commissioner and also a turnpike commissioner and a board member of the Erie Zoo. But there was legislation that was drafted when I was at Pendot, it was presented to me, about naming any bridge that would come in here and facilitate access the Bonnie Dobinspek Bridge. So I mean, that's a potential, that's, that's something for all of you to consider and the administration as well. This, we did talk to Pendot, we kind of blew by the bullets here, but one of the things that Pendot was recommending is possibly reusing the abutments, which is basically where the, the structure resides on these big abutments and putting a new pedestrian bridge, a prefabricated pedestrian bridge over so you don't have to do work in the creek. So it's an option, but we want to make it compatible, if we do it, it has to be compatible with the need here, which is the pedestrian and possibly bicycle access. But also, we're trying to be compatible with the Erie Zoo's master plan, which included a new giraffe exhibit in the northern part of their parking lot. And I guess, Andy, you're gonna talk about that as we go, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so here's a couple of photos of that area and like Bill said, in their draft master plan, the zoo is looking at potential new exhibit for giraffes in that north parking lot area and then potentially utilizing that existing tunnel as a, an entrance gateway from the north. I guess there's a city-owned property, there might be an existing parking lot or lots adjacent to Public Works building out there and, you know, so they, they were looking at, you know, could that be expanded for a new parking lot, use that existing tunnel to kind of bring people into the zoo, maybe make some other enhancements and then, you know, have this trail kind of loop around this new exhibit and tie into that, you know, future entrance from the north.
You got another parking lot to get, to get back to Cherry Street, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's coming up here, yeah, as you, as you head up the hill there to the, or to the west, yeah, you run into the parking lot for, for the golf course, the ice arena, the veterinary hospital. And our discussions with Scott Mitchell, he said currently that, you know, people, that people that do use it, they, they've done some striping in the parking lot, kind of informally, just to kind of give almost a pedestrian lane since there's no, I mean, there's a sidewalk adjacent to the ice arena, there's a sidewalk adjacent to thirty eighth street. But, you know, people are probably gonna take the shortest path, which is probably walking through the middle of, of the, of the parking lot, as you mentioned, so, you know, could that be enhanced somewhere, additional striping, you know, some deline, reflective delineator poles or something like that to, you know, safely carry people through there. Couple other alternatives would be to direct them over to thirty eighth street because like, you know, like you said, there is existing sidewalk from Glenwood Park Avenue all the way over to Cherry Street on the north side of the roadway. One issue with that is, you can see in a couple of those photos, they have the brick pavers adjacent to the sidewalk, so that concrete sidewalk section is about four feet wide and then it's another two feet of those brick pavers. It's kind of settled out, there's some sediment and, you know, grass growing up through there, so might not be the smoothest ride for someone perhaps in a wheelchair, could potentially, you know, create some tripping hazard, so, you know, upgrades to that to, to make it a full-width sidewalk or even widen it out if we're going from six feet to eight or ten feet, you know, depending on the type of trail users we're looking for. Then again, just some additional photos along thirty eighth street and you can see the, in that lower photo of the Glenwood YMCA right there. They were one of the community stakeholders that were present at one of the meetings that we had and, you know, showed some interest in, you know, directing Y members, you know, here is a, you know, an outdoor path that you could use, a running trail or something like that. I'm a Y member, I've run the loop, you know, just on the sidewalks and stuff, so I mean, to have something a little more formalized might get, you know, more people out and active and, and using that route and exploring the neighborhood and getting outside.
So we blew by that really, really fast, but you can tell there's decision points all along the way that, you know, we need all your help to support good decisions and, and, you know, and also obviously the administration's support as we move forward. We've got a long way to go. As we shared, we've got to talk to, to the community again, try to set up another forum, maybe your suggestion might be the best one to get people out. Regardless, there's gonna be a, a larger public meeting for everybody. We're just trying to get key stakeholders involved, so we, we heard about like that grassy area that you had a concern, maybe your neighbors might not like a new sidewalk in that area.
Stop being grassy.
Yeah, yeah.
It comes to drop off.
Right, right. So one of the, one of the big decision points is the width. I mean, it sounds like such a mundane component, but again, like Andy was saying, if it's pedestrian-only, the width can be largely accommodated within the existing footprint of the sidewalks. And then with augmentation, whether it's Glen Drive or down the bluff because we're gonna use that, that existing bridge that, that's in the middle of Glenwood Park. So those are different decisions, but do you have any thoughts about the needs of, you know, the, the community at large? I mean, would you want us to consider that ten-foot versus the six or eight-foot? Because it seems like there's, there's groups that want to see the, the bike way connected on thirty eighth street and then possibly just pedestrian access for the rest. And then others are thinking, well, it'd be a nice thing to have a, a bike way the whole way as well.
I think you should forget about old Glenwood Park though. You have to go and find out where it comes out by that pumping station.
Yes.
It's what, maybe thirty yards from Cherry Street and then you're gonna have to try to get all the way back over Glenwood Park Avenue.
And it's a hill.
Right, it's not gonna work.
Yeah.
It's not quite as steep as Glen Drive.
But you're not.
It is gently sloping down. It does add, and I don't remember the exact number, but it adds probably about a mile or so to the overall loop. The, the loop as envisioned by the zoo, Cherry Street, West Grandview, Glenwood Park Avenue and thirty eighth street or, you know, the cut through, through the parking lot, that was about two miles. Adding that, that southerly loop that utilizes the old Glenwood Park Avenue adds, I think, about a mile or so to, to the overall loop. So you get some additional, you know, trail distance, but to your point, you know.
To where, it's road to nowhere.
It's gotta tie in somewhere.
The good news is you're not gonna be affecting a whole lot of people, so I don't see a whole lot of blowback on it going the way we're going up Highview. There's nice elements of that.
What do you think about Glenwood Park itself? I mean, one of the alternatives is trying to traverse that very steep grade, it's, it's about a fifty-foot change of elevation. So you'd have to sweep along, you'd have to sweep along the contour and meander that trail through that forested area and then ultimately down to that bridge that we showed you in the middle of Glenwood Park. So that comes with, it's kind of nice because you'd be in the park setting, beautiful trees, et cetera. You don't want to rip up those trees, so it truly would be a meandering trail. I mean.
It's my backyard, it's very wet.
Yeah, yeah.
That with everything.
Yeah. You know, and there's, there's a little bit of a goat trail there right now, people are using it for, like Andy said, maybe walking dogs, maybe just taking a hike through the woods, it's, it's very nice through there. But to make it accessible for everyone, it would be a challenge. We even looked at switchback, you know, boardwalk elevated, you know, just back and forth, back and forth, kind of scissored look. That would be somewhat ugly, but we can make it accommodate ADA and, and it'd be quite a bit more expensive, obviously, because it, then it'd have to be maintained.
So I'm curious to know because there's currently already paved trails, do we maintenance those in the winter time? Like, do we plow those, do we give access?
Yeah, Pendot only does the roadway, so they're not maintaining any trails. So any sidewalk or trails that the city owns, yeah, you're, you're maintaining.
Okay, because I don't, I don't know currently that's being done and if we're going to be expanding additional trails and paths, I think that we need to start addressing the concern that during the winter months, people don't have access to as much nature because people aren't upkeeping the maintenance of removing snow. So you might want to note that just because if we do end up doing an eight, an eight-foot pass where bikers could go, they're gonna want to go in the winter months as well, not just the winter, I mean, not just the summer.
Maintenance security, it's gonna fall on our shoulders.
And that was, that was the, the next thing I wanted to chat about is the security that you've mentioned a couple of times now. You know, we would probably recommend lighting the least part of this trail in that, there's certainly some areas that would be very dark. You get to thirty eighth street, you've got some street lighting, but mu- much of the trail would be very dark.
I think as well, especially like for the switchbacks or any of that area, like one of the emergency blue, like the blue call.
Call boxes or something?
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I have to go and get that.
Thanks, go ahead. Take care.
On your side though.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we think that's a necessary feature throughout, really.
If you go with the, make it like less foot width, width, I guess, I mean, that's, like you said earlier, it's probably not gonna deter people from, they're not gonna say, oh, this is a five-foot, so I shouldn't ride my bike, they're gonna still ride anyways. So you might want to look at the, the larger width because people are gonna ride their bike anyways regardless, you know?
Well.
We want to be proactive, not reactive.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and ten-foot, I think I mentioned, was, was the minimum recommended, but I, I have seen, you know, for lower volumes, an, an eight-foot, you know, can work. And to your point, I mean, there's nothing stopping people from riding down a five-foot wide sidewalk currently.
Right, they're gonna do it anyways.
People do it all the time. So, you know, but I guess if you're gonna incorporate some, yeah, I mean, you could put a sign, but that's super easy to ignore and, you know.
I mean, we have a large community of new Americans, so unless we're putting it in every language that we have access to, it's kind of not as effective as we would hope.
Understood.
And I have a question, maybe not necessarily for the two of you, but for Chuck and Leanne. For Activeria and all of the projects, how was this chosen to be prioritized?
For Activeria and all of the projects, how was this chosen to be prioritized, or what was the impetus for this being a priority where we're going to do a feasibility study? Just, I'm trying to catch up onto the point of like.
This actually came out of a zoo project.
Okay.
And not so much out of active transporta, or the active transportation plan.
Okay.
It does tie in very well with the active transportation.
Yeah, and I think, I think one thing Erie's done a great job with, um, working with PennDOT's Bureau of Public Transportation, so these are multimodal funds, and they keep bringing up the, the deputies to, to be exposed to the Erie community and some of these items that sort of get lost in the shuffle of the NPO, which is looking at Interstate ninety and, and the Bayfront Connector, et cetera, that are really important, obviously, for commerce delivery, but this is a different type of investment in the community. So on the plus side, you're on a pretty good track, I think, to get construction dollars for the whole shebang. The, the thing that all of you have to weigh, and we, we appreciate your support on, and I guess I'm speaking a little bit for PennDOT, but it's the maintenance component.
Right.
That kills these projects. So if we can get the city to, you know, gently agree that this is worth pursuing, um, I, I think, I think we're working toward getting this funded for you.
I think my biggest holdup when I think about, I mean, none of us have specific districts, so it's just the people at large that we represent. But the part that really throws me is the potential of adding in sidewalks in a wealthier neighborhood where in Erie, our sidewalks are, the, the upkeep of them is the property owner, right? Like, the city is not paying for sidewalk maintenance, and so I don't know how I can say to my constituents, yes, we are putting in sidewalks in a neighborhood, you know, in front of a home that costs a quarter of a million dollars, when there's disabled folks, you know, in communities that can't afford sidewalk repairs for their own properties. And so I'm all for, you know, more trails and all of that, but anything that would add, it just, it doesn't, doesn't settle right with putting in sidewalks in some of those areas, so if it's, if it's a lower-trafficked street and we're putting in, um, we've been talking about this a lot at my other job, at the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, about making, uh, what Yard &amp; Co., the urban planning firm, has called a play street, um, on, on West Nineteen Street, where it's actually sectioned off, um, and it's painted bright colors, it's wide enough for bikes and for pedestrians. Um, I would be much more excited about something like that than adding in sidewalks for wealthy property owners, like that just, I can't, I can't justify that.
Yeah, and to your point, in the one area that we were talking about, um, in, in Glenwood, the West Grandview, um, section, you know, would, would do that. The alternative that we, we'd like, um, we looked at was using that northern side of Glenwood Boulevard.
Right.
You know, and that would be an on-street type of thing, and, and you know, maybe something like what you're talking about with the striping and the colors and kind of delineating it in a wider section, I mean.
Even dividing it, like the, the white dividers.
Right, with the reflective.
Yeah, yeah.
The candlesticks, I don't know, do you put candlesticks out as separators at all? No. We've done it in a couple places, but. Okay, mix that.
So the preference would be something like on, on-street, is, is kind of what you're saying, rather than building something new infrastructure.
Yeah, in a residential neighborhood, adding sidewalk, I just, I'm not, I really can't get behind that, because that's the property owner's decision, that's, it's a wealthier neighborhood.
They decided to remove it.
They decided to remove it, like, we have to respect their will to do that, and so I would love if, you know, the existing trail through already the park and then we make that longer, but the loop to me feels, it feels like a stretch-as-is with this current plan. But I do think we can get to a point where it is something for everybody, but I'm like, okay, we're gonna add in sidewalks in a wealthier residential neighborhood, we're gonna put in switchbacks, which someone in a wheelchair can't likely access unless it's a motorized wheelchair.
Oh, it'd have to be if we did that, the switchbacks, it'd have to be.
Right, but being able to get yourself up or pushed up that without a motorized wheelchair is gonna be extremely difficult.
It's, it's a lot of elevation.
Even going down, trying to hold that back is gonna be really hard. So there's, yeah, I'm, I love the idea of more public trails, um, yeah, I just think we've got to take some more steps to make it truly feasible.
So were you specifically talking about the property owner that Ed made reference to in that one photo?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, or any, like if, I can't remember the street that borders the, um, the golf course, like if it were to be there instead and, or whatnot, but it, yeah.
Like a shared a road again might be.
Right.
A better play. Okay.
That was Glen, Glenwood Boulevard along the golf course, and then going north was Highview Boulevard, where that grass area was just to the east and then into that wooded area that we were talking about.
Yeah.
One thing we didn't talk about, so I just wanna introduce it real quick, and I know we're, we're pressing up against your time here, but at Forty-Second Street in Glenwood Park Boulevard, um, we've noticed a lot of, and, and have been told about this too, a lot of kids jogging down from Mercyhurst, apparently coming, and they cross over five oh five there and go over to the park, probably run like, like Andy does.
Did you say forty-second?
It's actually forty-first.
Is it forty-first?
Or forty-first, yeah, sorry. Forty-first.
Yes, I've seen that as well.
Right, and, and what, you know, again, has that been something that you, apparently you've witnessed it, is it something that, uh, needs to be taken care of as part of this? And then the question becomes, working with, with PennDOT on some sort of perhaps safer crossing of five oh five? And I don't know, LeAnn, we haven't had a chance to talk to you yet about that.
Because we're gonna need a safe crossing point for all of these neighborhoods. Like, if we want all of these people to access this, we're gonna need a safe crossing point.
And actually, the, the neighborhood that did come out was largely up here, not here and here, which is interesting, but.
They said that they would use that, but they, you know, there were safety concerns because of the speeds, uh, on Glenwood Park Avenue.
So pretty much stating that they need a safe way to cross.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, yes, I would prioritize that.
They were uncomfortable with the way it is right now, that's basically the, the message. So, so it's something. At least you'd consider, I guess, and we'd have to work with LeAnn and Jason and Chuck on that as well. And PennDOT. Okay. Andy, what haven't we asked?
A lot of the, a lot of the highlights. Feedback.
Any other comments or thoughts, um?
Thank you.
About any of the features, issues?
I think just like what Jasmine said, we would love and invite any other stakeholder focus group, community sessions, happy, you know, happy to be there, 'cause then we can get a better pulse on what residents are.
Well, then, we can let the voters know that this is going on, when this date is, and roughly, if they're not able to reach them, maybe we're able to reach them, and the flyer could reach them, so that there's more avenues of communication going.
Yeah, we definitely, we definitely have to get more of them to the table, for sure, so.
'Cause, I mean, they live there, this is their neighborhood, and we want them to use what we're building.
We don't want any surprises.
Yeah.
For anybody.
Definitely.
Yeah, that was one of the, the comments, I think, from the Glenwood Hills neighbors that, that did show up, is that, you know, better get people from the Glenwood neighborhood because this is going through, and you know, to Ed's point with the sidewalk and stuff going through yards, you know, so, well, you're gonna get some pushback on that.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Um, one last question, has the zoo committed a certain, a certain amount of funding for this in any way?
Uh, I think they have a fund that, that was provided, I think it's for construction dollars. I've forgotten, it's in one of those slides, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it might have been in the, uh, the plan that Scott gave to us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, actually, it might be a little small, but yeah, they, they did get some money through the, through ECR, I think, and, um, it was a Glenwood Residential Group or something that they were able to, I think got some funding, you know, to, to potentially look into it, and you know, if things should advance. But yeah, I'd have to touch base with Scott and kind of get some more details on that.
So some of the, the, the big play, uh, dollar-wise are the pedestrian bridge at the old thirty-eight Street crossing, number one. Number two, if, if anything comes o, off of the park, off of the bluff, that would be big, or the, the trade-off is if you don't do that, trade-off is enhancing Glen Drive or that last alternative that, uh, we, we talked about that adds about a mile, which in some ways is really good. Does it make sense, and will people use it out there, and is it compatible with the need? Yet to be determined.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else that we should, uh, be talking about or thinking about at this point?
I don't, I thank you for your time and updating us.
Thank you.
I mean, I look forward to the plan as it continues to develop, because, you know, sometimes we fall behind in things, and I like to know what's going on, especially if this is a plan for, you know, twenty years into the future, we need to know what's going on.
Sure.
Because the community's constantly changing, and they're not aware of what we're deciding day-to-day until they get a notice on their door that this is happening, and that's not cool. So I definitely want us to continue the conversation and make sure that we're hearing all voices, especially considering, you know, people are gonna use the pit, the, the trail whether or not we make it big enough, um, and then people are also going to need access to it safely, so those are our biggest concerns. I think we've had a lot of accidents of people not having safe access points to things, and if we can get ahead of that, that would be lovely, so thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody coming out.
Thank you for the feedback and having us here.